False order, our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of March 5th. Our second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements and recognitions. Public comments. Alice, would...Alice?
Mr. President.
You want to talk about the homeless?
I just...I don't know what...
It's not an agenda item, so it only comes under public comment.
Okay. I'm just trying to get to the agenda.
Would you come...Alice, come to the microphone. Identify yourself.
Can you move your microphone?
Sure. I can hear you.
Identify yourself, Alice, and your address, please.
My name's Alice Bosby. My address is 1807 East University here in Guthrie.
Okay. And your public comment is?
I am trying to get a group of people together to see what we can do about the homeless, the drugs, the needles on the ground here and there. And I'm afraid a kid's gonna get hurt on a needle, or I'm also afraid too many drugs into the city is just making it easier for high schoolers and junior high.
Okay. All right.
That's it.
Very good. I know that, actually, that was one of...a topic that the Ministry Alliance actually had expressed some interest in also, and so maybe we can make some connection there at a meeting that the Ministry Alliance and the city had recently. I know that that topic came up. So, Alice, that's very timely. And let's put you in contact, and maybe you have some ideas.
Thank you.
Okay? Good. Oh, I think that's...this is for the Hotel Motel. And I think this one is on one of the houses, Sports Complex, Hotel Motel. Okay. The others are pertaining to agenda items, so I will then move to agenda item number three, which is Consent Agenda, which is Item A, which is the approval of Public Works Authority Meeting of February 5th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of that minutes? Okay. Submit your votes, please.
I'll look at my...
See the votes. Unannounced approval of the Public Works Authority Meeting of February 5th, that being the last item on our Public Works Authority Meeting. We are adjourned, and I will call to order our City Council Meeting of March 5th. Our second item on the agenda is Consent Agenda Items A through J. A is the approval of minutes of our Special City Council Workshop of February 5th. B is the approval of the minutes of our City Council Meeting of February 5th. C is the approval of a budget amendment for general fund, fire fund and grant fund. Is there a question?
Yeah, I was just looking for the minutes from the special meeting that we had, but I'm trying to remember the date that we talked about, the attorneys. Was that the February 5th?
I believe it was.
Seems like it was...
They're not in this package.
Okay. They're not in this package. That's what I thought.
Yes.
Okay. D is the...D through J are all amendments to hanger lease agreements that are CPI-generated adjustments to their lease agreements, increases in their lease agreements that are CPI-generated. So that are...those are all the items on the Consent Agenda. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Is there any other discussion?
What...on the CPI amendment, can you...somebody clarify that just real quick?
Every...these go over five years.
Shalon, you want to address that, please?
I'll try to give a short answer.
Yeah. That's fine.
When...in our leases at the airport, they're set up wherever five years the CPI increase in Consumer Price Index goes up.
Okay.
And that's what that's based on, and it happens every five years during the lease.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
I'll look at my...
See the votes. Unannounced approval of the Consent Agenda Items A through J. Item number three, public hearing to determine properties identified in Resolution 2019-06 for identified as dilapidated buildings. Staff comments?
Bill Darby will make this presentation.
Are we taking these all at once?
Yes.
Should we...should we do this like we did last time? Let me go through an address, and if there's public here to...or somebody here to address it?
Yes, yes, that's what we'll do.
Okay. So this is over Resolution 2019-06. We mailed notices out to ten different property owners to look at the different addresses to see if they should be declared dangerous and dilapidated. The first address we have is 1005 East College. There's a list of some of the previous code violations at that address. We do not have any record of water, gas or electric, so in other words, it just hasn't had any services in quite some time.
Okay. Would you like to speak to that, ma'am? Please just come and identify your name and address of where you live.
Hi, I'm Tamara Guthrie.
I'm Troy Guthrie.
We live at 103 East College.
And you own this property?
Yes.
Yes.
We own that both properties. There's two properties.
Both properties are...
Okay.
And we just need some more time to get the house cleaned up, the porch filthy. Who was an inheritance from our grandmother, and we just need time to clean it up.
I've had some health issues, so that's most time.
And how much more time are you asking for?
We need to get a little bit warmer. We're gonna get that porch taken care of and try to get it probably tore down.
Do we have pictures of this?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
When were you first given notice?
I have no idea.
You know, do you have any record of when they were first given notice?
The first notice was in 2012, and it probably was under a different number at that time.
How long have you owned the property, ma'am?
It was in Probeck for a while, but what, 2007, 14...2010?
But it was in Probeck for like ten years.
All right.
Is that it right there?
Yes.
Right there, shoulder?
Yeah.
And your plan is to tear it down?
Well, there's a lot of stuff in it that was our grandmothers and great-grandparents and where to get it cleaned out and then try to get it tore down.
So you want to get stuff out of there yet?
Yeah.
Yes.
And you would have it torn down by when?
I don't know how much time you would give us, sir.
When's the next time you're having one of these? Do we know?
Um, well, I mean, it'll be the next budget year.
So...
We have another round of this type of resolution.
Have you had any dialogue at all with city staff?
No.
No. This is it?
This is the first time.
Okay. You can have dialogue with city staff before it comes to City Council. Okay?
One option that we have, if you move forward with adopting resolution and condemn the property, it gives them 30 days, and as long as they make continued progress, and by progress, I mean something substantial, not take one box of debris out at a time, but if there's substantial progress, then we can extend that time period. But if there's no activity, then we can move forward and put it out for bids to have a contractor demolish the house or remove it.
You know, and we have done that successfully in the past as well.
Our preference from the city is to work with people and them do the cleanup and demolitions themselves, because then the city, of course, is not out that money, and we don't have to put liens on the property. So when...but the key is making substantial progress each month, each 30 days, or then the city has a right, if we've adopted this, to step in and say, you know, you've not made any progress in the last 30, 60 days, we're gonna put it on a bid list and have it tore down.
Okay.
With something like that, you think you might be able to work within those guidelines?
Yes.
Okay.
We're doing our best to do that. Yes, sir, we sure will.
All right.
You will need to make sure you communicate with Bill Darby, our code enforcement officer, on a regular basis throughout the processes. Makes it very helpful.
All right.
Okay. Now, you might want to let him know something substantial, like that whole porch needs to go away. That's pretty substantial.
Sure.
You know, that type of thing.
Yeah.
That's our first name.
That's our...that's the first name right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, our basic statement is that it needs to meet the minimum maintenance standards.
Because this house looks open. All the windows are open.
Yeah, it's in bad shape. It really is.
And if I understood your goal is not to try to renovate the house, it's to get your stuff out and then eventually for it to be demolished.
Right.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Bill?
And last time that we did this, we had three that successfully did that themselves.
Yeah, and that was awesome.
Yeah. Did that impose a lot of work on y'all doing that, though? Uh, it's better for everybody.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
Win-win.
So, our next address is 110 and 110 and a half North 13th Street. We have a list of the previous code violations there. It did have water in 2016, but electric, the last known service for electric was 2009, and gas was 2010.
These places standing open, is that how you're getting inside?
This is...it is open. It also is on the edge of the elbows, so there are people that go inside these houses, and there's two houses on this property and a couple of sheds. At one time, there was a car that you could tell people were occupying the property.
Yeah, we'll live here for a while.
So, and it does pose a danger, because it is nestled into the trees, into a foresty area, so...
Right behind a decent neighborhood.
It'd be a serious fire...it could be a serious fire problem.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a homeowner representative here?
I believe we got somebody wanting to speak.
All right, sir. Would you like to speak to this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is John McGuire. I'm at 725 Masters Drive, and I bought the house today from the owners that have had it since 1952.
Oh.
They're elderly, and they didn't really abandon it. It's just in the last few years, they've had health problems, and I would like to restore it and live there. It's a nice property on a nice dead-end street, and I would like some time to make it beautiful.
Bill, have you communicated...
Yes, I just came by the office today. You talked about that. And I can do it. I've been remodeling homes for 40 years. I'm retiring, and I would love to have this piece of property, and if you give me a chance...
Mr. McGuire, about how long does it take to make it beautiful?
Uh, this one's gonna take about 90 days.
Really? Wow.
But it's structurally good. I...it's just we're gonna put in new windows, new doors, new roof. Plumbing's already there, but we're gonna make it right. Sheet rock, get the sheds out of there, and landscape, and I think it's a great little...
Sounds like this is a winner.
Uh, give me a chance.
That's all we want.
Yep.
Chance. Okay? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Uh, the next address is 219 West Lincoln, and this is right on the edge of General Wells Park. We have no record of water service, no record of electric service and gas. The last gas service was 1989. So, um, there's just a couple of code violations there, but you might recognize it.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of there at the entrance to the park. They did call, and they expressed that they were gonna do whatever they needed to do, and which is take it down. They were gonna demolish the structure themselves.
Okay. All right.
Our next address is 310 South Elm. This one here is the only property that we have that has a mortgage holder. It suffered a fire in 2016, so all the services were good up until 2016. And at that point, we were gonna bring it with our last round of structures, but I didn't notify the mortgage holder properly, so we left it off of the list.
So how does that work?
What's that?
With the mortgage holder?
Well, we are...we have to notify the property owner and the mortgage holders 10 days before we have the hearing. And so this notice for this one went out on the 20th, I believe, of February. So, you know, we try and give more time than what's required.
Right. Are they here?
I don't believe so. So our next address would be 505 East Harrison. The last water service on 505 East Harrison was 2006. Electric, it had electric up until 2012, and gas up until 2004. Our next address is 511 North 10th, and the last water, electric and gas service on it was in 2006.
Wow. Long time.
This one here is on 10th Street. It's the next block from the splash pad.
Do we have any representatives here for this property? Okay?
Okay, our next address is 709 South Capitol. The last services on this were back in 2000 and 2001. It's surrounded in trees there, and the trees have pushed the roof, and it's pretty well just open to the elements.
Wonder when the last service on that one was?
Trees reclaimed it already.
It's been there for a long time.
Someone did call me on this property, and they'd expressed that they were in the process of trying to purchase this, and their only intent would be to tear it down and use the yard as adjacent to their property.
Well, they can still do that with the owner, or if we tear it down?
Well, if we tear it down, they have six months to pay us back for what it costs us to do that, and if they do it themselves, of course...
Right.
theoretically, it could save them money. 912 West Manser is the next one. Those are the previous code violations there. It had a fire in 2018.
Wow.
Is when this burned. And so the last services on this were water service and electric were '06, and gas was in '04 maybe.
But it had a fire in '18.
No representative there?
I don't believe so.
No, I know we have done on the last property.
Yeah. 1024 West Washington, those are the previous code violations there. Of course, this one has a decent roof, but it is missing a bunch of siding, and so it's still exposed to the elements.
Anybody here on this one?
No. Our last address is gonna be 1108 West Manser. There's the previous code violations, minimum maintenance standards in 2014. The last electric service there was in 2018, but water and gas were in 2010.
I know we've got some representation in the room for that one.
I believe so.
Yep. Okay. Want to come forward, identify yourself and your address, please?
Billy Kautz, 300 Riverside Place, Guthrie, Oklahoma.
Tell us if you have some other idea on using this property.
Uh, I've sold it. I sold it to John Beck in back in October.
Okay.
And he's wanting to restore the house. And I've cleaned on it...well, I got involved in this because the guy I worked on it, he was a hoarder, and he had the backyard all full of stuff, and I cleaned it up since February till about the first week of October. Got the old yard cleaned up, and inside the house, it was plum full of stuff. And the guy that...his brother owned it, he said, "I'm gonna sign it over to you, Billy." So I ended up with it for the labor.
Lucky you.
Yeah, lucky me, yeah. But in return, I sold it to John Beck here.
Okay, so Mr. Beck, tell us what your plan is.
I plan to restore the house.
Time frame?
Uh, the roof will be...just the roof will be...the materials will be $4,000 or $5,000 if I do it myself. If I hire somebody, it'll be over $10,000.
I don't believe that.
I could...we could remove that shed on the side, and we could secure the windows immediately almost, but the roof will...I don't think we'll have it done through the summer.
May I show you something on the screen there?
Sure.
And, uh... This shed right here is kind of an add-on. And at the back of it was a room for one of the boys. So that there is deteriorating, and it needs to be taken off. And the original house is right here, right there.
Okay.
So it needs to be taken off.
What about the front? What about that front stoop?
I think the stoop is secure. It's the hole in the roof above it that's the problem.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Uh, the rest of the roof is in decent shape, but like I said, we just got a letter...the first letter we got was just a few months ago. So this isn't something we've known about for a long period of time, and he's been cleaning on this. Most of these houses you've got on that list, no one's done anything to them for years, and we've spent six months and several thousand dollars already on this house. And I hope you guys give us at least through the summer to fix that roof.
Okay.
Billy, did you say you sold it to him?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
But the house, you had...the house, when I cleaned...I got Jim Hamm that lives right there behind, and the lady next door, she says, "I can't believe what you've done over here, Billy." And Jim Hamm said the same thing. But Jim Hamm's been complaining about that old house right there to the east.
Just saw it.
We can see it.
It's been that way for 15, 18 years, you know? It's a disgrace. And I got Randy up at the garage, runs Randy's Garage. He couldn't believe how much I cleaned it up. And I even went in there on the fence line, cut out the trees and brush to make it look nice.
It was mowed all of last summer.
Yeah.
It sounds like he's done a pretty good job. What are you gonna do to keep it from just totally going?
There's a hole in it right now.
There's a hole on two sides of that roof.
Sir, I've lived in this neighborhood for almost 20 years. I live in Wichita Falls now. I drove two and a half hours up here. I'm going two and a half hours back. I won't get back till midnight, and I gotta go to work at 5:00. I didn't do that to come up here and not take care of this. I mean, I really...you tear it down, it's gonna be an empty lot for the next 20 years. So, I mean, it's better if we do something that's good for the neighborhood.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I'm just thinking that the city inspector's gonna have fun getting...
Well, I'd be happy to work with the guy, but I was out in Saudi Arabia until three weeks ago.
I think I talked to the owner.
Okay. All right. Well, as the city manager said before, we want...we would prefer that the owners would rehab and bring these buildings back rather than the city take over and demolish. That would...we would prefer.
Sir, Billy and I, in the last 10 years, we've torn down three houses in this neighborhood on our own. I've restored one. I mow two acres at least every week. Even when I'm out of the country, I send money back to mow this. I bought a $6,000 lawnmower to mow this. I rented two lots from the city for a dollar a year that I maintained for 10 years.
Yeah.
That if I didn't maintain them and I didn't mow them, you guys would be mowing them, and you didn't even know they belonged to you.
Well, Mr. Beck, you're on TV. You may get more work coming to you.
Well, I have a real job, but...
I think what our mayor's trying to say here is that we give opportunity, and I think this would be one that will give the opportunity. You'll just have to make the progress that Mr. Darby can live with, because he's over it at the end of the day.
I'm happy to do that.
And so you'll have to deal directly with him on that.
That's fine.
Appreciate your comments and your efforts.
But bear in mind, that means that when...if this resolution's adopted, you'll have to secure the property, and you'll have to make substantial progress every 30 days. So...
It's pretty hard when that substantial progress is $10,000. I mean, as far as securing the windows, I got it. Tearing off that shed off the side, that's not so bad, but it's still got stuff in it. That's how big a project this was. He filled a shipping container and hauled up numerous pickup loads, bottles and trash, plastic bottles. I don't think you guys realize how bad this was. And one of these houses that we tore down belonged to Louis Burkhart, and you guys know how long you guys were in court on that. And I got it and cleaned it up within 30 days. I spent thousands of dollars on that. So I hope you guys are flexible on this timetable.
Well, I guess we need to define flexible so that we don't have to define it later. I mean, if you tear the shed off and secure it, and then we wait nine months for you to put a roof on it, we're not gonna be that...
The roof will be on before the summer's over.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question.
And I'm not trying to be hateful. I'm just make sure you know what our expectations are.
I have a question, Mayor Wright.
Yes, go ahead.
And I know Billy, I've known him for a long, long time, so I know what he does. What I want to ask is, it shows here that Mr. Wright is the owner. Are you the legal owner? It says Frank L. Wright is the owner.
Frank Wright was the legal owner.
Right.
His brother passed away.
Okay.
So I went over there, and I started helping Frank clean up the place. And Frank said, you know, "I'm gonna donate it to you, Billy, and I'll sign it over." Well, I had three old cars in the back, three trailers, pallets that you wouldn't believe, stacks of them, court pop bottles, hundreds of them, and newspapers in the stacks. We haul three loads of newspapers out here to the recycling plant, pickup loads. Randy at the garage hauled three pickup loads of wind vultures in the cases to his place.
Somebody had a party.
He wasn't going to drink.
Somebody had a party, or indeed, they have a...
So, but they legally transferred this over to you?
Yeah, it's the deed filed.
Your title.
But it's the deed been filed.
Has the deed been filed?
That's the main thing.
Okay.
It just hasn't been filed for me yet.
Okay.
I wanted to add, yeah.
I wondered about the ownership here, too.
So it's still yours, Billy, technically, because it's still in your name.
It's mine, but it's his now, until we change it over to him.
Right.
Okay. Which will happen momentarily.
Yeah. But I'm not gonna help him on that roof.
All right. Okay.
Sounds like you've done enough.
Any other questions from the council?
I wish I'd have took pictures when I first started and showed it to you when I cleaned it, but I didn't.
We believe you. We believe you. Anything else you got to identify in any of these?
That's your guy right here from now on.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there...did anybody come in that wants to speak to any of the other properties on that list? Yes, sir. Come forward and identify yourself and your address. We may have missed you along the way.
Yeah, my name's Terry Morgan. I got a house at 912 West Manser.
Okay.
And I need to tear it down, and I just need a few months to get it done. I got it for sale. I got some people interested in lots, and I told them if I sell it, it has to be done according to the city rules.
Okay. Mr. Morgan, you said you want to tear it down?
Yeah.
And you said two months?
Yeah, it's history. It's gone.
Can we pull it? Two months?
Uh, give me till like 1st of July. I should have it done before that, but that'd be plenty of time.
I guess a question, are you gonna be making progress or...
Yeah, I should be. I told them that they, it had to be fixed, so they won't get by with me.
Again, if we can show substantial progress every thirty days, that allows us to work with you. If this is adopted tonight and thirty days from now, it looks just like that, then it makes it less flexible for us to work with.
How much time did you need?
Uh, I'd like to have till first of July. I, I should have it done before that, but I'm gonna be gone for about a month in, here this month.
So, you need four months? Three months? Three months. Okay.
We're ninety days. We're thirty days in. If there's progress, that's sixty. It sounds like it'll work.
Terry, can you get something done in thirty days on the deal? Are you gonna be gone or what?
A little bit, maybe, but I don't know how much.
He's already said he'd make significant progress.
Yeah.
We wanna, we don't wanna set you up for failure, but we wanna, wanna, we wanna, we want progress, too.
Somebody, if they buy it, it's gotta be done according to the city and it won't be no stall at all.
Okay.
Cause I, I'll probably carry the paperwork on it and I'll make sure that it's done.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other questions from the council? All right. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Okay?
Anything else remain?
Uh, anybody have any questions?
Only that, what we approve this, we have four that are gonna obviously do, start working on them and will have some kind of progress. Terry Morgan's will be maybe a little longer than thirty days, but on these others, they're gonna start working on them and so, you'll start tearing down the ones that weren't represented immediate? Is that how that works?
So, what we do is give thirty business days.
From now?
From now. And then, we reevaluate before we go out to bid.
Okay. And if they're making some progress, then they'll be...
And they're making progress.
In essence, there is sixty days, really, before it goes to really anything really serious.
Correct.
Yeah, so, that, that should help a lot of people right there, even though we're adopting a thirty-day timeline.
And, and even if we go out for bids, if they make progress, we don't necessarily have to ward that bid. So, there's some time, as long as they make an effort, but...
So, Terry, you can make progress in sixty days, right?
Yes.
There we have it. I think that we're working, it works with everybody.
All right. Good. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Actually, I identified five of them that, uh, might have some work going on. Uh, okay, I'll entertain a motion then to approve resolution two zero one nine dash zero six.
So, moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval for resolution two zero one nine dash zero six. Uh, item number five, discussion, possible action to approve, uh, the solicitation of bids for construction of a storage building on the airport. Shalana, you wanna talk to us a little bit about that?
Yes. So, for a while, the airport's been in need of a maintenance building for its equipment, tractors and a place to do our servicing on that equipment. Right now, we currently have a carport and a little shack. The size of the building would be eighteen hundred square feet. We've budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars for it. What we'd like to do, providing you guys approve this solicitation of the bids, is the contractor would erect a prefabricated building. So, that cost would include a prefabricated building, including the installation of a overhead door, you know, the side door, of course, concrete foundation, a water stub in and your electrical stub. Then, at a later date, what we're thinking of doing is we wanna put an office in there, not real late, but our guy, Carl, at the airport, airport operations, he can frame in all that for an office. So, we basically get it set up so we can take care of all of our equipment, have it all secured in one place and have a place to do our maintenance. Let's see what else. That's...
Now, is this, is this the total cost or is this our, is this our cost? Is it a seventy thousand dollar building that we're splitting or...
No. The, the hope is to spend no more than thirty-five thousand dollars to get it all the way we want it.
Okay, but we split with Edmund, no?
Correct. So, once, yes, that's correct. Half of that would be, and I should've put that in here.
So, we actually, our cost is seventeen five.
Correct.
Okay.
My apologies, I didn't put that in here. I usually do.
Like you said, it's way overdue, too.
Just a minor thing.
Seventeen thousand dollars.
It's nice to have a fifty-fifty share.
Yes.
And I think it's kinda way overdue, too, so...
It is. It's, it's been like that since I got there in twenty fifteen and it was that way previous, too. With the new guy I have, new guy, he's been with us almost a year. He's real handy on maintenance and doing all kinds of stuff, so it'd be really nice to do that. Plus, we're growing. So, we originally, we're gonna do a smaller one. The advisory board, airport advisory board, suggested we make it a little bit bigger and that way, we can use it for storage, one end of it. Cause right now, I'm using part of the FBO's, uh, back storage room for our file cabinets and archives and stuff.
We got a motion and a second.
Have it.
Motion.
Second.
You wanna run it?
Thank you.
Not this year, Mr. Mayor. Not this year. I'm running for something else.
I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a mo-
Second.
I'll entertain a motion and a second. Is there a second? I didn't hear the second. Okay.
I'm not saying word.
Any discussion?
I don't want to get shot.
Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote three.
We're just playing with you.
That's, I know you are. Unanimous approval for seventeen five, our component of the thirty-five thousand, uh, for the approval of the, uh, storage building. Thank you very much. Okay, item number, uh, six, uh, possible action lease, for a lease agreement with the International Bluegrass Festival. Staff?
Um, it's in draft form, but because of other work items, I don't have it finished, so I'd like to table this to the next meeting.
So, tabled. Item number seven, uh, possible action for the proposed Guthrie multiple, multiple sports complex, uh, concept plan. Staff?
At this time, staff doesn't have any additional. Uh, we look forward to input from, uh, city council and others as to how we might refine. It appears that there is a good amount of support for the project. The question is figuring out the funding mechanism to, uh, make it happen.
Okay, so, do we have another workshop that we wanna put forth or what do you wanna do?
What I'd like to do is, uh, get some input and then, uh, be able to prepare from that input different options and then, we would have another workshop.
Okay. All right.
So, nothing tonight.
So...
No action.
No, no action. Uh, is there anybody in the public who would like to speak to the concept of the multi-sports plan? Not, not necessarily the funding of it, but the concept.
What I wanna do is just give a petition, a hotel, just to be, just to be on record, okay?
Okay, this...
What is it?
Um, okay, this is, uh, this is not a petition to oppose the project of the sports complex proposed at the corner of College Avenue and Highway thirty-three. We would like the city of Guthrie to find other avenues of financing the project instead of adding an additional four percent to the hotel lodging tax. Um, and then, it identifies the current breakdown of hotel taxes, uh, for, uh, the Guthrie area. Um, and it's signed by, uh, the hotels, Sleep Inn, American Best Value, Interstate, Hampton, Holiday Inn, La Quinta and Townhouse Hotels, all local hotels here in Guthrie. We'll enter, we'll identify that, include that in our records. Um, so, no action taken, uh, at the, at this time, uh, on item number seven. Uh, agenda item number eight, discussion, possible action on the, uh, funding options inclusive but not limited to the hotel, uh, tax revenue.
Eight, nine and ten would all be tabled at this time.
Okay. Items eight, nine and ten then are tabled for additional information, uh, possible, uh, future, uh, additional workshop and, uh, future discussion at, uh, future council meeting. Uh, item number, um, eleven, city manager report.
I, I have no report tonight.
Okay. Uh, item number twelve, uh, is, uh, comments by city council. Uh, councilwoman, Patchett.
I, I actually have no report tonight. Does that surprise you? No comments.
Okay. Councilman Thomas?
We're going back and forth. Uh, I'll just reiterate what she just said.
Oh, I like that.
Councilman Taylor?
I got a long report. No, uh, thank you, staff. Appreciate all the, for the snow removal and all that. We've had a couple of nice storms and hopefully, I think, everybody in here is ready to see winter go away and start getting spring and summer, so... And also, don't forget, eighty-niners is not that far away. Uh, we're about, what, we about?
Six weeks.
Sixty days or less away from eighty-niners. So, be prepared for that. We'll, there'll be some people coming to see some people downtown. That's it.
Councilman Buthray?
Yeah, I want, I think Bill, yeah, where'd he go? He's gone, isn't he? Okay, well, anyway, I wanted to commend him on their job. Well done on the houses, but I also wanna recognize Chris just a little bit because he's everywhere that we are. Do you notice that? It's kinda like everywhere you are, there's Chris. But anyway, appreciate what you do, Chris.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Uh, yes, I'd like to say thank you to the city staff, uh, Tenny and our fire department and our police department for the tragedy we had here in Cat Town. Uh, a couple Saturdays ago, losing some businesses, uh, oh, the fiddle shop and for Furrows Flower